Good morning and welcome to this meeting of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and it's been webcast. My name is councillor Argensio and I'm chairing the meeting today. We have received no questions or petitions from members of the public, by submission deadline, therefore there are none. Please, can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff and the assembly point is to the square. I will start with asking each member of the committee to introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Hello, I'm councillor Jordan Lewis-Hammond, I'm the co-chair of the committee.
Morning councillor Ruth Melsom, I represent Crete and Crosspool Ward and a member of this committee.
Morning councillor Martin Phillips for City Ward.
Morning councillor Anne Woolhouse for the Baden Ward.
Morning councillor Kevin Oxley, councillor for Malsborough.
Councillor Steve Aries, deputy chair of this policy committee.
And can I ask the officers to introduce themselves, please?
Sarah Bennet, Assistant Director for Legal and Governance.
And Alexis Chapell, Director of Adult Health and Social Care.
And Abby Hodgett, Democratic Services Team Manager.
And of course Claire, doing all the tech stuff there. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council website. They were available in paper format in the room, but the cleaners were very efficient and thought it was recycling. So we're still trying to track them down, sorry about that. Please note that there are two changes to the agenda. Item 16 will now be item 11. And item 12 has been withdrawn due to the item in COVID in the crosscutting briefing. And when it gets to that point, I will ask Alexis to explain why it's going somewhere else. The papers have now arrived, so if you need a paper copy, they are. I think Claire is going very kindly to distribute them if you need one. So apologies for absence, have we received any?
Thank you Chair, no apologies for absence as far as I'm aware, thank you.
And there are no items to, item three, there are no items for exclusion of public and press. So we can just get on with item four declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest from members? Take that as a no, thank you. And item five is meetings of the previous meeting, minutes of the previous meeting, sorry. That is on page 11 of your pack, if you've got one, or if you've got an electronic version. I will go through it for accuracy and if there are any matters arising, we can do it after that. So at page 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. Could anybody spot any matters arising? I couldn't. Okay, brilliant, so those are approved. As I said, item six, there are no public questions and petitions, so we're going to move on to item seven, which is our work programme.
Thank you Chair. So the committee's work programme is attached to appendix one to the report. There's a couple of new items that have been added, I think, to this committee. And the rest are there for officers to see, for members to see. And officers are here to take any questions if members have any, thank you.
There are any questions or comments about the work programme? Okay. So item eight, hospital discharge and urgent care delivery plan. This is on page, it's at the supplement, it's page one of the supplementary pack. It's a tiny little document. And if officers could introduce themselves when they start reporting. And just on this item, we are asked to, the recommendations are that we agree the direction of travel and planning improvement activity and request that the director of adult health and social care provides the committee with updates and progress against the delivery plan in six months' time. Thank you Janet.
Thank you, my name's Janet Curran, I'm the Assistant Director and Chief Social Work Officer. This isn't my area of work anymore, but it was my area of work for six years, so I'm stepping in today to talk you through this report. Having looked at the report, and you've already stated the recommendations Angela, there were a number of things I thought was worth bringing to your attention. So I think one of the really important things, and again, I witnessed this over my years doing this work, is that there has been an increased demand around hospital discharge. Which is something that we've, that's been challenging, but we've worked very hard to deal with. The other thing I'd want to mention is around enablement. We have a very, very good enablement offer in Sheffield. And I can say during some of my time as the Assistant Director dealing with this area, where I was contacted by other local authorities asking what we did. So very positive and it continues to be positive and is improving and getting even better. Because obviously, the point at which someone goes into hospital is a point of crisis in their lives. And how we deal with people when they are discharged from hospital is really important. Having said that, if we can stop people going into hospital in the first place, that's even better. But we need to get it right when people come out of hospital. The other thing I wanted to mention is we do have good support in the community and we benchmark well on that. We have a stable, there's a figure that we're judged on about people coming out of hospital and how long they stay out of hospital. I think it's 91 days that we get judged on. Now clearly some people will be unwell and will have to go back in hospital. But we do well on that, that particular metric. And it's a stable metric, we've managed to keep it where it is, which I think is good when you consider the increase in demand. We have a lower falls admission than other areas, which I think is a positive. Because obviously particularly for elderly people, falls are often the reason they end up in hospital, so that's a positive. I thought what I'd then focus on are some areas that we've looked at in terms of practice and how we work with people around hospital, hospital discharge. And an important one of those is care at night. Because often, when people come into hospital, it's hard to know when they leave hospital, if they're going to be able to manage. We've not got a very good baseline to judge them from, they've been on a hospital ward, they've had care around the clock. So sometimes, to keep those people safe, we need to put in care at night. Sometimes we put in care at night for a night, two nights and take it out. But sometimes that's been the thing that's prevented people from leaving hospital. We've now got to a point where there are no waits for care at night, which is really positive. I think the important thing about that is that we're in there and reviewing very quickly. And we've got a very good arrangement with the provider who provides our care at night service. And they alert us if they think that people don't require the care at night, we go and review where we move the care. So that's, that's a real positive. Care home trusted assessment, what this means, it's an interesting thing. The term trusted assessor gets used a lot around the hospital. And there's about six different definitions of who we call a trusted assessor. But in this respect, a care home trusted assessment is something that we introduced a number of years ago. So instead of every care home manager having to find their way generally to the Northern General and find a place to park, which is incredibly difficult. And take the time to go and assess people to see if they will be suitable to go to their care home. We have a small number of trusted assessors that we contracted previously to do that. So they did that work day in and day out and the care homes trusted them to do that and would accept their assessments. What we did, I think it was last September, formally it happened, is we brought that service in-house. So we chuped the staff from their employer at that time and brought it in-house. And we did that for a number of reasons, but I think the main reason was about flexibility. So what we've got now is staff who are, with another group of staff in the hospital social work team, can do the care home trusted assessments and do other work and can fill in. So that's, that's been very positive since we've done that. I mean, some of you will know that our access to care at home support and leaving hospital has improved. We've got the additional 1600 hour at home care hours, which is going really well and is taking a really positive enablement approach. Which again is linked further down to a comment made. Temporary care home support, I mean, ever since I worked in the hospital, there have always been points at which we've used care homes as a staging post really for people we know need to go home. But we haven't got home care immediately available. So we've worked with our colleagues at Sheffield Teaching Hospitals to put that in place. I think generally the funding comes from them, but we provide staff who do assessments and make sure that when people are going home, they've got the correct care. And often that's been actually quite successful in making sure we do a better assessment. That means that the care at home matches what it needs to match. And then finally, I just want to mention partnership with the voluntary sector. In particular, there is one voluntary sector organisation who does really good work around hospital discharge, who will take people home, who will settle them in, who will make sure they've got the heating on, who will make sure they've got some shopping. And that's been a really good relationship, which we've, we've worked on expanding and using as positively as we can over the years. But I think that's probably all I want to say, unless people have got any questions.
Any questions from any members? George?
Thank you Chair, thanks Janet, just a quick comment and a question. I think firstly, I want to support the recommendations and I think, I think a lot of really hard work has gone in to make, to make this work. But I would reflect that it's just a paper that outlines the sign of how adult social care is seen nationally and by government. It's just, this is money being, we or the system have been given when adult social care becomes the problem. And as strategically we can try and be in elements in spending this money, it's really clear that it's something that's done under huge strain and is only done to try and meet the minimum of the issue rather than really work through what are those, you know, longer term problems that cause the so-called winter crisis, which of course now is more like a permanent crisis in the NHS. But my question really, it does relate to that, is do we know, do we do, do we or can we do any monitoring for this in the future yet? In terms of the workforce involved here, I appreciate that most of the workforce are obviously within contracted home care or care home providers. The additional workforce that are carrying this work in whatever time scale it is, a century of the winter, do we have any kind of view on what happens to them for the rest of the year? Because clearly, we, when this money is not being spent, we go back to our normal level of spend for us and the NHS, which is at a lower amount or still significant. What do we know about the recruitment of workforce by our, you know, by the contractors for this? How do they do that? And then what happens to that workforce at the end of the spending period, which I guess is 31st of March? Because it does worry me that this kind of funding, although it's not our fault, doesn't really help us recruit, train and retain a great social care workforce in the city. Because I don't know anyone that wants to do, you know, three, four months' work a year, most wants to do 12.
Yeah, I don't know some of the detail of this job, but what I would say is that I don't think there's a group of people who work and then don't work. There's probably a group of people who work more hours sometimes and less hours another time. And that's certainly in our internal provider service, that's the case. So what we know is where we struggle is school holidays, because people want more time off. There's something here about flexibility for people. So some of you will be aware that at the beginning of the pandemic, we put an advert on the council website for support workers. And those support workers have been employed in different ways, depending on what suits them. Some have chosen to have casual contracts, because they only want to work when they're available. Some have chosen temporary contracts, some have chosen to have permanent contracts. And I think that's some of what happens, is actually it's the way people are employed, rather than there's a group of people are employed or not employed. But I think you're absolutely, interestingly Angela and I were both at an event on Friday and I joined a group at the end of that day talking actually about this issue, about workforce, how we recruit and retain, how we make this an attractive career for people. And I think some of it is about flexibility and offering people flexibility in what they do. Not everyone wants exactly the same. So we've certainly had situations where we've employed on a casual basis the partners of people who've got full-time jobs and sometimes are available. So we'll just, the way we deal with that group of staff is we'll send, we've got a WhatsApp group. So we just send a WhatsApp message out saying, we need support in this area of the city over the weekend, who's available? And we get takers, but a lot of people find that helpful because they don't want to commit. But I genuinely don't believe there's a group of people not working. I think it's people working more or less to suit often the rest of their life.
Alexis?
Let me just add into the question is, the issue that you're also raising is about funding for social care. And the funding that's noted in the paper is short-term funding. And one of the conversations we've been having with health, and we hope to give an update in the next committee, is about the next round of funding and that's kind of alluded both in the budget update today, that will be known at the end of February and how that could bring some consistency into adult social care, particularly around the discharge agenda. I think that, you know, what, what there is, you know, continuing to be a need for is to look at the long-term funding. Because when you look at post-pandemic, post-COVID and the ongoing demand, is ultimately, it's no longer just seasonal pressures. We have to look at now is actually we are supporting people in terms of supporting people to return home from hospital when well, all the time. So we need to have that consistency of support and funding to be able to go and do that. And that's certainly something that we are discussing with our health colleagues as to how to achieve that. And hope to be able to bring some updates back to committee as well around that for next March. Hopefully that's helpful.
Thanks Alexis, Ruth?
Stuff in there, so I was looking at the table on page three at 1.4, which indicates that we're doing well against targets. Just wondered, are those targets set, are those targets set nationally or locally? Just for the context of those numbers.
I'll transfer to Alexis for that one, I think.
Sorry. We have, so, so the targets, the Better Care Fund targets are both set nationally and locally. So the targets are set in the paper are the local Better Care Fund targets that are, that we've set as part of the funding. And that was in November, committee had the annual Better Care Fund update, essentially that was kind of part of it. And one of the key things that is part of the Better Care Fund is what we tried to do, was look at our ambitions in the city towards both emission avoidance, which is what we'd want to do is enable people to remain home from hospital. But secondly, very much is people are able to return home from hospital to their own home. And so essentially that's the context behind the targets. So they link both to kind of national and local ambitions that we want to achieve as a city. And one of the key ambitions is now with the process, what we've now got through the democratic process through to committees, is that the Better Care Fund reports used to go straight to the Health and wellbeing board. And now it also comes to this committee as well for governance and issue and scrutiny as Timur performs, because it very much relates to hospital discharge.
Just, yeah, just a little bit more clarification Alexis, if you can, is these, how do our targets relate nationally? Are we setting higher targets, lower targets, median targets?
That's a really good question. So some of the, so a bit of a context, some of the, a couple of targets in there relate to kind of social care, what's called adult social care ask-off outcomes. And in terms of the benchmark, last year, set targets in terms of how we averaged against benchmark with other areas. So that's how these targets, I believe, were arrived to. And one of the key things that we are doing as a piece of work, as partnership with health colleagues, is essentially looking at all the data that we've got. And as you may recall, in September, we did a benchmark exercise as to where we sat against SIFRA and core groups and core cities. And essentially for hospital discharge and for the Better Care Fund, that's where we're doing that just now, is doing a further benchmark and update against the latest data. So that what we're also going to do is as we start to set that ambition in the future, we want to say that, you know, and I always want to say from plenty of Sheffield, is that we are better than the average. You know, that we want to say for the people of Sheffield, that actually our ambition is that people, you know, are enabled to return home from hospital, but also that we make discharge personal and we achieve better outcomes. One of the things that we are doing, which is I think very different across nationally, is we're going to be one of the first adult social care, which I believe is supposed to start to talk about people's outcomes and experiences. So in the report, we talked about making discharge personal. And in safeguarding, we record people's outcomes and experiences in safeguarding. And one of the ambitions as we start to move towards that making discharge personal, is we do exactly the same for individuals returning home from hospital. Because it's such a vulnerable time in people's lives. And for anybody who's been a family member or a carer, and I've been there myself, you know, who's, who's had to, you know, support and for individuals themselves, it really is, it's sometimes the most vulnerable time. So we want to say actually, we're not just meeting national targets, we're exceeding them. But actually, we also want to say that we want to deliver and say that we're delivering positive experiences for people in that, in that sometimes that very difficult time in their lives. So hopefully that's helpful.
Thanks for making the comments, it's just because the question comes in multiple parts because of what Alexis has explained. Are we aiming to keep upping these targets? Are we, I mean, do we feel we've reached a ceiling or is there still more that we can be ambitious for?
Really good question, so thank you for that. So the benchmark for these was set at 80%. And what we want to do as partnership with health colleagues, as we start to look at what would be the benchmark for next year, certainly for me, is I would want to get to a point where we're saying actually it's 90% and then 95%. Because ultimately for the citizens of Sheffield, we want to be able to say, is it not only people have lived experiences, but actually people are being able to return home from hospital and to their own home. So it's absolutely, it's, to me, that's a threshold, but we want to continue to go and exceed and improve.
Thanks, I hope Martin?
Thanks Chair, I think my question's probably been mostly answered. But just to be clear, after the 31st of March, we just lose the additional 1,600 hours. And there's no long-term funding for that at the moment. If we wanted to keep it, we'd have to find the funding in budget and that's not looking hugely likely, given financial pressures.
Thanks Alexis.
So for the additional 1600 hours, that's the discussions we're jointly having with health colleagues now. Because what we've found is the pilot has been absolutely fantastic, pilot, been a really good piece of joint work in between ourselves and health colleagues. And I think that experiences of individuals has been really, really positive. So the discussions that we're currently having just now is how was that funding continued? How do we continue on with that model and ways of working? What I hoped you were able to do through the, in March committee, is be able to give an update in March committee as to the outcome of these discussions that we are presently having. And hopefully good news for committee.
Brilliant. I'm going to move on to the recommendations. So as I said previously, agree the direction of travel, the planning improvement activity. And request that the director of adult health and social care provides the committee with updates on progress against the delivery plan on a six monthly basis. Are people in agreement with that? Brilliant, we can move on to item nine. Item nine is adult health and social care digital strategy. John, could you introduce yourself, please?
Good morning, I think I've met most of you, but for those who haven't, I'm John Brenner. I have the lead for change and strategy on Alexis's leadership team. I'll be very brief in introducing the report and leave time for any questions or comments or the rest of your business as you see fit. I would like to start off by expressing my gratitude to some people that have worked on this, because it is a bringing together of quite a lot of different elements of this. Tabby Green has recently left the council, but after 15 years of service to go to work elsewhere in the city, has done a great job bringing this together. And I'd like to thank Chris Blackburn and Mike from our central information, our information services team, who have worked with us to make sure we're aligning to the future direction of the council. And I'll speak a bit more about that in a moment. And people like Paul Higginbottom, who you all know, who's done work around the tech-enabled care elements. So why do a digital strategy? I suppose the real, the real reason is there's lots of, there's lots of ways that digital technology is in the adult social care system. There's lots of ways that it could be a lot better in the adult social care system. And if you, if it is piecemeal, then it becomes a big, big mess. And we were kind of starting to experience this, we were getting approaches from companies that were doing interesting things, that looked appealing on the surface. But actually, we started asking ourselves, how does this fit into our overall direction? And rather than, rather than swoop into the magpie-esque, into the shiny things, we thought we need to just pause, take a breath, have a think about what our overall approach is, how the architecture of our, our digital elements fit together as a whole for the people that use them and for our workers, for the, for the right outcomes. So we did this piece of work and we thought it was important to bring it to you. I realise digital strategies may seem to some of you dry, but I think, but this makes a difference to people's care. It makes a difference to delivering our overall strategy. So we've split it into seven principal areas. Assistive technology, you all will be familiar with, and not least from the November report on tech-enabled care. And that obviously impacts people's care and has the opportunity to, you know, greatly improve people's care, as well as the sustainability of the system. In terms of use of data, well, that again, sounds quite dry on the surface. But actually, if we understand who are the, who the people are that we're most likely to see in future, we can do more preventative work with them. We can understand where our priorities should be in order to meet our responsibilities, but improve outcomes. And with a link, always always, you, better compliance, better outcomes, more financially sustainable generally in adult social care. It's a nice win-win-win situation. In terms of how we work with partners, identifying where we, we have got a social worker or a social care practitioner or OT who is working with the same person that a community support worker or a GP is interacting with or in housing. So our data, you know, while data sounds very, and how we work with partners can seem dry around it, actually, that is at the core of joined-up care, person-centred care around the individual and by systematising the relationships around them. In terms of automation, we can be more effective, not just, people think automation and this is about efficiency and there are elements of efficiency to this. But actually, if we are, if we can automate processes, that means they're quicker, that means we can get to people quicker, it means we can serve people quicker, it means that people have a better customer experience, but, but, you know, even more important than that kind of satisfaction of customer experience. If we can get things quicker, then we can be more preventative, we can stop things deteriorating, we can impact on outcomes. In terms of applications, well, that is the more back office element of this, along with our internal processes. But again, if those are efficient, we are more effective at providing care for people. And in terms of our information, advice and guidance, well, that's the first port of call into the adult social system for so call into the adult social system for so many people, not just people that potentially receive care, but also for people, for their relatives, you know, we know that actually, that, I think, off the top of my head, a few years ago, we did some analysis, and about 89% of people accessing adult social care webpages and our offer weren't the people receiving care, it was their friends and relatives, it was the professionals working with them, it was the VCF. So our information, advice and guidance is crucial here as part of that journey. And joining this together, so it's a coherent whole, is vital. So that is why we've brought this to you today. In terms of the what, I've said it after the report, I've gone through those seven areas, and very briefly, apologies that the package is slightly repetitive, they're slightly different products, there is a cover report to give you some context, there is the strategy itself, but I think most important is the delivery plan, on how we're going to make this real, and actually going to make this into something that has those impacts I've described, rather than something that is just a committee report, agreed by you, hopefully, fingers crossed. In terms of who, we talk about ownership here and there, in the delivery plan, you see ownership, and clearly Alexis owns this as the director, but we feel like it was important to say that there is someone on the leadership team that has that coherent bringing it together role, and that, assuming this is agreed, will be me on Alexis's behalf. But working with, in the delivery plan, you'll see, there's a lot of different people, a lot of different people, Tim Gollins, Janet Kerr, who you know well, who will be key in delivering different elements of it, and working with me to ensure it is all tied together. How will our progress be monitored? Well, one of the recommendations is that we bring back six monthly reports, to updates to you. I propose we do that through the updates to the strategy delivery plan, rather than the separate standalone reports, as we've suggested there. So it reduces your burden of numbers of reports and the number of times you read the background stuff, but it means you're updated on progress towards it, although obviously, we will do whatever you feel serves you as a committee best. And lastly, internally, the question, how are we going to monitor our progress against it, and where is it going to see, whether it fits into the effective and efficient outcome from the strategy and therefore of our themed performance clinics that rotate, we will pick it up internally through our performance clinic on our effective and efficient theme. That's all I wanted to say. Happy to take questions now or outside here.
Kevin and then Martin.
Just a comment, really, John, in terms of, I thought this was an excellent report. I thought you didn't hold any punches in terms of what the challenges are and what we needed to do, which is a very honest approach. It sets out where we are and where you want us to get to, without saying it's going to be easy, because there's an awful lot of challenges. So it was just really to commend you on that.
Martin.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for the report. Just a couple of quick things. On the climate impact assessment part, I lost my comments, which is good. On the climate impact assessment part, I wonder if you'd considered, when you're looking at technologies, the carbon footprint of data centres, when you're commissioning, just because there are basically commitments that organisations can give to be carbon neutral, net zero. So I think that's worth taking into consideration when you're going to talks with organisations, or if you're looking at doing it in-house, about how we're storing data and the footprint of that. There's some good standards out there, there's an EU one that could be looked into, you can sign up to, even though we're outside the EU. And then also, on consistency of data reporting, just like a technical note or suggestion, I wonder if we're finding that some fields aren't being populated, some data's not being populated, that needs to be across the field, if we're setting like mandatory at the right levels. That's probably overly technical, but I just come from a software background.
Yes, I understand that. Thank you for the point around data centres. I'll take that away and we'll feed it in. A lot of that is to work with our corporate colleagues around, and we're working very hard for the, I mean, to, you know, this is effectively our portfolios, digital strategy, there's a council one we're working closely with, and I will feed that into that. But it's a useful one, I know there's some interesting new technologies around data centre, cooling in particular, that's very interesting. In terms of reporting, I won't go into in detail, but we are doing work myself, well, Janet is chief social work officer, around both the format and systems elements of our reporting and our practice around when it is and how it's filled in and the consistency around that. And I'm happy outside here to provide you more information, as I'm sure Janet would on that.
I have Ruth.
Thank you, Chair. It's a really interesting report, I'm quite excited about it. I think it all sounds very coherent and enabling, I think, are the two things that I pulled out of it. I've got a few little questions. I just wondered, on page, sorry, on page eight of the actual report, there's a little comment here which refers to procurement, their impacts and energy demand for running digital tools, I think this is probably what councillor Fitz is referring to, these can be minimised through effective procurement of hosting and digital service providers. So I was going to ask about that as well, like what tools you've got for ensuring that this procurement is effective, and where, you know, where are you looking, are you looking locally, globally, for that procurement? So I was quite interested in that. And then I wondered as well, what kind of boundaries there are going to be to the sharing of digital information across health and care bodies? So how much dovetailing are you anticipating, or will there be some hard boundaries to where information can be effectively shared? And I think I had one other little thing as well. Oh, well, yes, how, this is, I'm sort of intrigued about this, how can you build in safeguards to make sure that clients and staff, in fact, don't encounter sort of those sort of computer says no kind of situations, where if we're relying more and more heavily on data to make good decisions, and that's a theme that I've seen throughout the report, using data to make good decisions, how do we ensure that there's flexibility around that and fluidity around the kind of knowledge that, so how can, how can sort of experiential knowledge also complement the data that's held in black and white, as it were? So you don't get, well, it says on the computer that, which is contrary to a client's experience. And finally, just about staff training, just curious about how, it sounds like there might be quite a lot of training involved, how will staff time be managed around that, and will staff be fully paid for training time? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for those insightful questions, as they all were. The, taking them in order, in terms of procurement, there isn't a, there is a single answer to this. It rather depends, and we've got commercial experts in the council, of which I am not top of the list, although I'm relatively commercially savvy, around this. We are aware, and there are some differences in this sphere, in particular around, in terms of assistive technology, is that this is a very fast-moving area, and it's important to have a framework that is, that approach that can take advantage of development, and it can be quite agile around the right assistive technology as it moves forward. In terms of things, the big stuff, the data centrey type stuff, we will work and listen to and be steered by our corporate colleagues, who are more expert than I am, or aspire to be, quite frankly, in that kind of area. But there is more thinking to do, as you can tell from my answer. On the second one, in terms of boundaries around information sharing, well, there is a lot of work that's gone on nationally around joined-ups health and social care records. We are not as far forward with that in the city as other places are, although certainly it is, it is an ambition. I have a personal view on this, which is not necessarily a departmental view here, that actually, it isn't about sharing great wads of information, it's about linking together the professionals around the person, it's about systematizing the relationships. And therefore, when you start talking about which other professionals are working with it, and then including that, and then enabling that human interaction between professionals, then you get in, then it becomes a lot easier to share information than when you're sharing, you know, personal details about, you know, people's lives, their medication, their relationships, et cetera. But there are, there will doubtlessly be information governance, and rightly, information governance requirements we need to meet to keep data safe for everyone's interest, and we'll work through that. In terms of big data, it is less hard, so system-wide data, it's a lot easier than it is on individual level data, where obviously the safeguarding concerns and the information concerns are far more personal. Again, it's quite a detailed area, we have experts in the council in it, but I'm happy to talk to you more outside this meeting, rather than going to a level of detail now, partially because I may want to do a bit more research beforehand. In terms of the computer says no stuff, there is no substitute, you know, social care and health deal with people's lives, people are complex, situations are complex, in particular often the people within the social care system. This is about how you support the professionals, you know, we are not, we are a long way from any kind of artificial intelligence prioritisation, it may be a future direction, but that isn't set out, you don't see the words artificial intelligence set out in the strategy. It's not, it's not an immediate risk, although it is one we need to be mindful of, but there is always going to need to be humans, both delivering care and assessing and planning support and working with individuals and working through crisis. The question is, how can technology help them? But if you ever try telling a social worker that the computer says no, then you'll hear about it. We want to hear about it from our staff, that's, you know, we want people to tell us when technology is bearing. On your last point around training, well, it is a varied and mixed economy. We've had a approach here around applications training that has been very classroom-based. Janet and I don't think that is the most effective, I'm playing with going far more to short videos, and Chris Blackburn, who leads the applications team as well, short videos that are very digestible around it. I think different people in the city, and different levels of digital skills, and actually, what we need to be very careful of is actually people receiving care's digital skills aren't a barrier and creating inequalities, and we are ever mindful of that. And, you know, I'm not particularly worried about it, we are keeping an eye on this very closely, so the digital skills are our population, and there is citywide work, again, Mike, leading that from a corporate point of view, who's the relevant director, on digital skills and working with digital Sheffield, et cetera, around our digital things. And we just had a, corporately got a very interesting report around that, that we're still digesting, and will go presumably to the relevant committee, which I imagine will be stretching resources.
Thank you, John. Kevin, do you want to go briefly?
Yes, sorry, I was just formulated a question in my head. I'm interested in big data, because that can tell us where we need to target things. So how much big data are we able to mine to be able to answer some of the questions in terms of how we actually deliver the service in various areas of the city?
It's an interesting question, and it's a long-term endeavour, this. I don't think we're talking about mining at this stage, and I only think, we've got an awful lot of data that we and our partners hold, that we are not, that how we use that together is going to be the challenge for the next five years. It's not going to be about mining data elsewhere, and I'm not, I would need to think very carefully about, in order to advise you as a committee around the wisdom of that, or the ethical dilemmas that that starts to bring. But there is so much data that we and our partners hold already, that we could be using so much better, and that will be the immediate focus.
Thank you. I'm going to move to the recommendations, which are approve the digital strategy for adult health and social care and confirm it aligns with committee's strategic direction, and request the director of adult health and social care bring a six-monthly report noting update and progress made with implementation of the strategy to committee.
So just to note, we bring that as part of the strategy delivery plan update and the programme updates, rather than give you yet another report to read?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that. And I assume that some of the updates that we get monthly will be part of the DAS report as well, rather than people coming back.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are people happy with that? Thank you, members. We move to item 10.
Thank you.
Transforming care, yeah, transforming care homes for citizens of Sheffield. This is on page 69 of the main pack.
Hi, thank you. I've just dropped my ID card on the floor, so I need to remember to pick that up. I'm Catherine Bunton, I'm the head of adults commissioning, and I want to thank Joanne Knight and her team for writing this report and doing the work behind it, they can't be here today because of illness, unfortunately. So this report sets out the partnership work we want to do with care homes in the city to take, to deliver our duty, to deliver a sustainable market, and there's a report later on that, but also to work with partners and providers in the city, people who live in care homes and their families, to look at what outcomes mean, what quality means, and what new delivery models could look like in Sheffield in the future. In appendix two, there's the two-year plan set out on one page, which I think is quite helpful and goes through some of the things that we want to do. It's a plan for all care homes. The papers in today's report look more closely at older people's care homes, which is connected to some of the work we've been doing over the last three months with that sector. But in the spring, we'll be making sure that the development plan, the needs analysis is further progressed, looking at residential settings for people with learning disabilities, physical disabilities, and our mental health care homes. And that's one of the things that would come back in six months as an update. In short, the first stage, the first two phases are about building the understanding of what the current needs are in the city, what the projected needs are going to be, where our providers are at the moment in terms of what they deliver and what they see as the opportunities, particularly focusing on workforce development and the retention of the workforce and valuing the workforce in our accommodation with care settings. Yeah, looking at a collective quality standard for care homes and what we can do, so that in the autumn and the winter, we can go out to a framework which sets out what we expect from standard rate care homes, get all of our care homes, ideally in the city, onto that framework, and improve our contracting arrangements, that makes it simpler for us, it improves our process, and it makes it better for the care homes as well. And then phase four, having got that sustainability and that stable place, is our opportunity for innovation and development. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Could we be at risk at setting too high a quality mark or too high a standard that our care home providers can't make? Obviously, we want to increase the standards, the report sets out quite clearly the different elements and areas that we want to raise the standards in, you know, providing homes that people want to be at. I thought there was an interesting comment about people feeling that the care home was a home and not just a place that they stay at. And also, obviously, given, if you look at the comparison of how much we spend per patient on the care home compared to with other comparative authorities, we're quite low down that ranking. So are we set? So my question, going back to my original question then, how could we be in danger of setting too high of standards that our care homes just aren't able to meet?
Thank you. Is that, is that all right? Am I coming? Okay, okay. Actually, our quality standards in care homes in Sheffield are good comparatively already, and I think that we should thank our providers for the effort that they're putting in for that. I think there are benefits in having a mixed model and understanding more about hour rates, self-funder rates, how some of those quality models are being delivered and working with partners on that. We're consulting at the moment on our fee rates for next year, and we've had some good feedback, and we've got care homes that want to engage with us on that and go through the costs and the opportunities further. I think the strength is in working together. I think that there's a strength in our developing Sheffield Care Association, they're changing their legal status so that they're able to get income and investment into the city as well, and offer support to the sector. And I think that's a really good model of us working together, so it's not just the council taking ownership, it's the sector as a whole. And I think that we are doing well, and we can always do better. And I think some of that also comes out in the phase three and phase four, where once we've got our framework and our standards of what we expect as a, it's a minimum standard, but a good minimum standard, and then there's what else? What, what does extra look like? How is that delivered? How do we get the investment for that? What's essential? What's optional? And it also looks at different levels of care need as well, which helps us to plan for the future. So I don't think we could ever set too high standards in Sheffield and I'm confident that our providers will, will manage to get there too.
Thanks, Catherine. George?
Thank you, Catherine, to you and to, you know, the team for this. There's a lot of really interesting and exciting stuff for the future. But just, I just wanted to just touch something you actually mentioned in that last answer in terms of what's going on right here, right now with the 23, 23, 24 consultations. You mentioned your ongoing, you know, consultation. I don't know if you can tell the committee a bit more about how that process is going and, you know, what the next stage is to conclude that, because clearly that's, you know, the immediate outcome. Thank you.
Yeah, so we've sent out a consultation document to all care homes in the city with our proposed rates for 23, 24. There's a, that's an option for them to return by email. There's questions in there. It refers to the fair cost of care work, obviously, which is part of the consultation that we would normally do in understanding what the costs were of delivery and what the pressures were. But it asks for further comments on that. It asks for the information about their workforce pressures and their intentions around any changes that they might make to self-funder fees. We're offering individual meetings to care homes that want it. We've got one in a couple of weeks with a care home who's, we're going to go out to the care home as well to see, see, see the settings and also go through a sort of open book exercise, which is really helpful. It will conclude in March when I come back to committee with the fee rates proposals, not just for care homes in the city, but for all our services, which will feed in both the consultation feedback that we've had, also some of our understanding from our market oversight and our sustainability and reflecting how sustainable we think our market is alongside our duty to set a balanced budget. And some of the, yeah, just some of the knowledge that we have about how well we're doing and how far we are getting towards the right fee rates.
Bruce?
Thank you. I'm really interested in what's mentioned on page nine of your report about having strong links to the local area committees and their empowering communities work. There's, there's very little detail here, quite understandably, because it's not a report about that particularly, is it? But I wondered if you could expand a little bit on that. What sort of opportunities do you see? I mean, all the members here sit on local area committees, so I'm sure we're all interested to hear about the kind of opportunities we could be seeking to support. I mean, we, we do things like, you know, we fund various activities that are fit, that sit within keeping people well and that sort of remit. We fund, we tend to fund little exercises and little projects. So things like Step Out Sheffield and luncheon clubs and IT support. That's, you know, armchair aerobics. All these things are funded locally through our award funding and lack funding. But I wonder what, what more we could be looking to open out through the Lacks.
Thank you. Yeah, we're looking across adult social care actually about our relationship with the local area committees and how we can share some of what we're doing, improve opportunities for people to inform and influence what we're doing. We had, I had an early conversation about that earlier this week, actually. And I think there's something about looking locally at what the residential settings are in the area, what community connectedness might mean in terms of one of the strategic outcomes we want to achieve for people who are living in a residential setting and it feels like a home and the contribution that they can make and, and people being aware of what's there. And I think it can open opportunities for what I would refer to as co-production in terms of that quality of life for people comes in part from the services that they may, might need and are delivered either by or through the council, but also through the communities and resilient communities and how people work together and know about each other. And so I think the main opportunity that we've got at the moment is having those conversations, being very visible, helping our providers to be visible in those local area committees. And yes, if there's opportunities for funding, for testing things that we think would make a difference, then obviously that's very, very welcome. But the key thing around that is always the sustainability and finding the options to keep things going where they are making a difference. But I think it's a real opportunity to just have that open and transparent Sheffield really, where, where people are very aware of what's happening in the communities and where they live.
Do you, do you think, who do you see sort of leading the conversation on that? Do you see a kind of scenario where, I mean, who are the experts who can guide that kind of more innovative thinking about what we do through the Lacks? Are you thinking that there might be suggestions put to the Lacks about projects they could undertake, things they could fund, ways of connecting people more in the communities? I mean, you know, none of us are necessarily experts in this. So it's, you know, kind of where's the, where's the guidance and the impetus going to come from?
And I would always look to providers themselves, depending on the different provision that we're talking about. So in this instance, it would be care homes, but there's others. We've also got our Citizens Engagement Project, which is linked into the Care Homes Transformation Project as well and how we can strengthen and improve the voice of people who are in care homes, also the people who may not be in care homes at the moment and how that might sort of reflect back on some of our equality objectives. They're the experts in the field as well. So I think that we've got, our council offices can be the facilitators and the enablers of some of that conversation. But I would say that it would be our providers, our voluntary and community sectors, especially around the early intervention and prevention work, because prevention happens obviously at every, every level of need. And then working with my colleague Kate Danrell and the Citizens Engagement Project and Health Watch to make sure that, yeah, that voice of people with lived experience is front and centre of some of those ideas.
I have Kevin and then we'll wrap it up.
This is a leading question and I know you know the answer. How do we ensure that there isn't a two-tiered system between self-funders and, and those that receive full support from us?
I think that's about being really clear about the outcomes, going back to the outcomes and the quality that we expect and working with providers, being really transparent about what the costs are, what a fair cost of care is, not just for providers, also for self-funders and for sort of the councillors as the holders of the public purse and taxpayers. It means fair for everybody. And I think by being really clear about what those costs are, what's expected and, yeah, I think, I think probably all our providers are really conscious about that and want to avoid it as well. And having those commitments set out in our specifications, in our development plans that we'd work on together, that's how, one of the ways I think we could protect against that. But I think we just need to be aware of it and understand and make sure we're looking for any gaps as well to, to make sure it's mitigated and it doesn't happen.
Thank you. I'm going to move to the recommendations, if that is okay. So there are three. Approve the Care Homes Commissioning Plan, which sets out the strategic direction for the development of care homes in Sheffield in line with the CARE Act 2014. Number two, approve the associated high-level delivery plan for the next two years, so 2022 to 24, including the intention to re-procur support and sustain the market. And finally, agree that an update on progress is provided to the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee on a six-monthly basis. Are people happy with those? Great. And we can move, thanks Catherine. We can move on to item 11, which was item 16 on the origin, in the original pack. And it's on page 273 of that original pack. So you need to go to the back. Sorry, Catherine. You're back.
Hello, it makes sense to have this report immediately after, actually. So this is about local authorities' duty to ensure a sufficient care and support market meeting the needs of the population in the city. To do that, we have to be confident in the oversight of the market, how we know the quality of what's provided, the gaps that we have, might have now or in the future and where we might need to improve and how we would do that. That goes hand in hand with our duty to plan, intervene, act to ensure that the market is sustainable. So this report and the appendices summarise our approach to do that. Paragraph 2.7 in the main body of the report gives some examples of the actions we're already taking. I've had a breath, sorry, from going backwards and forwards. Appendix one gives some more detail on our current assessment of, of how sustainable our market is, where we're strong, where we might want to take some actions to improve and then the actions that we are going to take to improve it further. It should be viewed as a live document. Obviously, the situation is ever-changing and the content in this report will be reflected in the submission that we make to the Department for Health and Social Care connected to the Fair Cost of Care exercise. Appendix two is a care quality framework that sits within the adult social care performance framework as part of the care governance strategy and provides our approach to assuring the quality of all care, provisioned care, directly delivered care. And that will be implemented alongside the new contract arrangements we've coming, we've got coming in 2023, 24 and beyond. Again, I'm suggesting that we implement that with those new contracts as a learning approach, making sure that people get the opportunity to inform what it looks like for different service areas, to potentially update that in approximately 12 months' time. And then just to note for committee, appendices three, four A and four B provide an update on our requirements and our submissions to DHSC on the Fair Cost of Care exercise. Thank you.
Any questions? No. Excellent. So we have three recommendations for this report. We had a briefing on this, didn't we, as a whole committee? So we've got quite a lot in-depth kind of understanding of it. So the recommendations are approve Sheffield Market Oversight and Sustainability Plan 2023-24, approve the Care Quality Framework and request the Director of Adult Health and Social Care review and refreshes the Market Oversight and Sustainability Plan and the Care Quality Framework annually for subsequent consideration by the committee. Are people happy with that? Brilliant. So now we move to item 12, which was item 11 on the original agenda. Thanks, Jane.
Okay, this report is to bring the committee up to date with the current financial position of the council, the general fund outturn position. It's a standing item on every committee's agenda, which falls into the bi-monthly cycle. So we bring the most recent numbers available. We're currently talking about the month eight numbers, which is November position. The last update the committee had was in December, which was the month seven numbers. So overall, the council is steadily improving the forecast outturn position, but it's still significant overspend for the authority. The overall position is 17.1 million overspent against budget, which was better than the previous month by 1.6 million, which was 18.7 million overspend at month seven. The improvement generally was due to strong cash balances of the council, so better returns on rates that were outside of the forecast. The main areas for overspend generally in the council are in social care. So predominantly in the adult social care committee, we have an 11.6 million overspend and 6.6 million in children's. So the reasons for the overspend, this is a year-to-date report, so a lot of the narrative remains the same. It's about the shortfall on the delivery of the budget implementation plans and the savings that were put in place as part of the budgeting process last year. So the overspend is against a net budget of 153.6 million. The position was largely stable from month seven to month eight. And a lot of the overspend is to do with the, the savings packages, which was a lot of that was about the high package of, cost packages of care and the reviews that are in place. The main areas are in the purchasing budget. So we've got an 8.5 million overspend in purchasing budgets. There's a table in the report that kind of talks you through that. The position did improve in the month, but there is a continuing worsening trend in learning disabilities and this is 6.9 million of the overall variance. So there is work underway to address the underlying issues. And I think this has been described in the recovery plan that was presented to committee in, in December. And all of the 22, 23 savings will be delivered by the close of 23, 24. But the phasing of that is obviously being looked at more closely in the forecast as we look forward into 23, 24. So happy to take any questions on the update. Thank you.
As a committee, we only asked to note this report. Are there any questions? Thank you. Thanks, Jane. Before we move, before we move on to item 12, Alexis, would you mind to explain why we, we withdrew the original item 12? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, so, so I have the privilege of chairing the Autism Partnership Board. And over the last year, we've been co-developing autism partnership strategy, which I'm really, really delighted about. And one of the, as a, in terms of the advice, in terms of governance arrangements, is it because the strategy will be all age and we focus on both children's and adults? And we very much want to make sure we took an all-age and a life course approach to, so that we very much develop an autistic-friendly Sheffield, which is absolutely my ambition as Chair of the Autism Partnership Board. What the advice has been in terms of approval for governance is twofold. It's number one, we need to take to Strategy and Resources Committee as a cross-cutting committee for the council because it's all age. And that's, that's the first thing for approval. And then secondly, before that, we have got a briefing arranged with members of both the children's and adults committees, very much similar to what we did with the mental health briefing in January for the 22nd of February. And what that will do is enable member engagement in the strategy before it's brought for approval, that Strategy and Resources Committee on the 15th of March. And what it will also do is enable us to finalise our consultation with the members of the partnership board and also the autistic community, so that we ensure when we bring the, the final strategy forward for approval to Strategy and Resources as the cross-cutting committee, that we have both endorsement from both children's and adults members. So hopefully that makes sense.
Thanks, Alexis. So we're moving on to item 13, approve all age mental and emotional health and wellbeing strategy. It's on page 153 of the, and I believe Alexis, how are you presenting this? Oh, it's Steve, sorry. And Louisa.
Morning, everyone. My name is Steve Thomas. I'm a clinical director, sort of at the NHS Sheffield ICB, sort of also a working GP. Excuse me. I, I helped to lead on with, with our team on the mental health, learning disability, dementia and autism work for the city, which is cross-organisational. This is my colleague, Louisa.
Hi, so Louisa King, Head of Commissioning for Mental Health, Learning Disability, Dementia and Autism at the ICB Sheffield Place. It's nice to be here. Shall I talk through some of the parts of the strategy? So this strategy has been a long time in the running and it's real kind of evidence of the partnership working in this, in the area of mental health. Because we've got a really strong partnership between different organisations, voluntary sector organisations, NHS, local authority and also different parts of the local authority. So it's not just about adults, but it's children, young people and the whole family. And our main aim is to have a strategy that reflects the importance of emotional and mental health and wellbeing for all at every stage of life. So that's sort of the, the strapline of the strategy. And what I wanted to do, I don't want to talk through the whole of the strategy, otherwise we'll be here forever and you've got it in front of you and we can talk about some of the details, if that's what you like. But it's got some outcomes that talk about the importance of mental and emotional health and wellbeing being at the heart of everything that we do as a city, running through every piece of work. Obviously, also, the strategy does talk about specific mental health services that exist in the city, but our focus isn't just on that, but on what every partner and what every organisation can do to contribute to that for more people in the city. We've got four main delivery areas in the city. So the first is around addressing the wider determinants of health. The second is really expressing the importance for us of supporting children and young people. And we know that many mental health conditions begin before children become adults, and so the importance of prevention is just really key. So that's kind of one of the four main delivery areas. The third one is about providing earlier help to people who need it, targeted help and support. And the fourth area is about good quality care and treatment of services when people do need mental health support. What we're saying is we're bringing this strategy to you today, but we're also saying that we will work with partners to produce a delivery plan, which we will bring back to this committee in six to 12 months' time. And it will be a partnership plan, so it won't just be local authority or NHS, it will be across organisations. Every organisation will have something to deliver, and all sorts of different groups will be involved in that. The sort of the growing partnership structure in the city, which perhaps Steve could ask him some questions on that, is about the Mental Health, Learning Disability, Dementia and Autism Board will have oversight of this strategy, and will feed up into the Health and Care Partnership for the city. So that's sort of how it will be overseen, as well as coming to this committee. Is that okay introduction? Any comments or questions on that? Thank you.
Do we have any comments? George?
Thank you both, and that's with you. This, obviously, there's been, there was a lot of talk for quite a long time, I know, before the strategy developed, around how the best way would be to approach this sort of thing, and there were some developmental approaches, I know, in the last two, three years of testing different approaches of how we might put together a strategy, and what's the best way to try and get something that not just says what it needs to say, but can influence, but can influence all organisations and stakeholders in the city to do the right thing. And I just wondered, you know, with the support that this strategy has clearly already got, how do you think that we can embed this, particularly focusing on the mentally healthy city, outside, how can we help organisations take cognisance of this strategy when doing their business as usual, if you like? Because I know as a council, we will be doing things that might not automatically make people think of mental health, you know, designing spaces or strategies in other areas which actually have impacts, and actually other organisations that, I'm certainly not saying as a council we're the perfect organisation on mental health, but there are other organisations that will probably be doing really important things, the cities, you know, even for example, the development of our city goals, for example, which is a cross-organisational piece of work. How can we use this strategy to make sure that, you know, cognisance of ensuring better mental health is baked into the work of every organisation in the city? So it's a very open question, I only expect some ideas in response, not a fully fledged one. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, George. I'd say three things. I'd say governance, evidence and relationship. And I think that sort of governance, the way Louisa just alluded to the fact that we have a cross-organisational sort of mental health, learning disability, dementia and autism strategic board for the city, sort of which does have membership from all sort of key members. This organisation, providers, voluntary communities, sector, in fact, VCSE's sort of sector leader will be a co-chair of that board as well, as well as having Primary Care Sheffield involved, and then sort of having, excuse me, sort of the wider support through, for example, public health colleagues, you know, sort of giving evidence around sort of like population health, et cetera. So I think that the governance then sort of threw into both the Transformation Oversight Committee for the ICB and into the Health and Wellbeing Board, and the clear links with the Health and Wellbeing Strategy, you know, this isn't standalone, in fact, this stands together with the Autism Strategy, the Learning Disability Strategy, and the dementia strategy for the city as well. So governance, I think, is important. Evidence then that comes with that, you know, how has it been produced? This strategy has been, is not new, this organisation sort of had to statutorily hold a mental health strategy historically, and this has evolved out of that and has become a citywide partnership agreement. And then sort of with the evidence and sort of in the relationship, it's about how we coordinate and link back through to, for example, providers' strategies. So this is influencing and has been influenced by, for example, the Health and Social Care Foundation Trust's clinical strategy. So it's making those sorts of links, surfacing it appropriately sort of in that, and being able to consistently refer to it, isn't it, use it as a tool. And I think that the most important, one of the more important tools, not that a strategy isn't important, because it gives us a direction of travel, but having sort of the agreed delivery plans and sort of clarity on what we then do together. Does that make sense? Is that helpful?
Yeah, no, that is really helpful. Thank you.
I have up to some. Thank you, Chair. Just sort of following on from what George has said, in terms of the delivery plan, how are we going to make sure that it's not just more of the same, and that we sort of change the direction in which we're going, so that it is more early intervention, it is more out in communities? How are we going to ensure that it's not just a replica of what we've seen in the past?
I think that's a really good question. I think that the way that voluntary sector partnerships in this space have been developing over the last year mean that we're able to produce a delivery plan that looks a little bit different, or that has the sort of real sense of voluntary sector kind of support underpinning the plan in a way that perhaps might not have been possible a few years ago. So I think that really working with our partners, I don't know if you're aware of the Voluntary Sector Alliance or the VCSE Alliance that supports mental health organisations, which brings all of them together in a new kind of wave working, I think that we will work more closely with them to produce this delivery plan. And we've also invested in working more closely with experts by experience as part of that work with the Alliance, and so we'll be working with them to develop the plan as well. So I think that makes the kind of the environment look a little bit different. I don't know if there's some kind of...
Yeah. And in fact, you know, this is never something that starts at a particular point, it's an ongoing process, isn't it? You know, we've been working sort of in this area for, you know, for years, for decades, you know, sort of your question about change, I think, is really important, because just building on Louisa's point, we even went through sort of quite a different prioritisation and priority setting process, even in the last, you know, quarter really, sort of looking from the work that the board and then the Operational Delivery Group have done sort of from September, in terms of jointly setting sort of priorities, which our VCSE colleagues actually led. So, you know, councillor Argentio and Lindas Hammond sort of were part of that process as well, because they're actually members of the MHLDDA sort of Strategy Board for the city. So we took that sort of more co-production sort of perspective on how to set the priorities and how to rank priorities as well, because one of the challenges, isn't it, is really about how to phase, you know, sort of actions which lead to outcomes, because we like, like everybody in this room, we like to be able to do things immediately and completely, but that's not possible. So actually, experts by experience, co-production principles, the VCSE sort of being sort of an equal partner in this space, with the intelligence that they bring sort of from on the ground, you know, sort of experience, I think sort of will change the delivery plans.
Thank you. And Kevin, and then Martin.
Thank you. What more can we do in terms of designing this strategy for intervention? You know, prevention of mental health and wellbeing and emotional issues is very difficult, because there's so many different causes and so many different reasons why. But what more can we do, and should we be targeting early intervention a lot sooner? I'm thinking not just for mental health, but also dementia, you know, there's research available recently where intervention at early stage dementia has had a much better prognosis in terms of delaying that dementia inset for a much longer length of time by providing that additional stimulus, and same as, you know, similarly within our schools, within our children. What more can we do at that level that then means that down the line, we're not adding to put more costly support around those individuals?
Yeah, thank you. And I think that that's one of the key elements of this strategy, sort of is that promotion of wellness, emotional sort of wellbeing as well. So you're absolutely right. It's always difficult, isn't it? Because we live in situations where illness has already occurred, and illness will always occur, but to what extent and to what sort of level? And Louisa made mention of a statistic that I can sit, and I'm not great at retaining stats in my head, but there are two sort of stats that I think are always fundamentally important. Recognising that societally, mental ill health accounts for 25% of all of the mortality and illness burden that the NHS deals with, just the NHS alone. And also the fact that by the time a young person is 14, it's 50% of established mental illness has been established by the time that they are 14, 75 by the time a young person gets to 25. So this strategy sort of challenges us all sort of to look at moving away from an illness mitigation model, sort of, and looking at what is it to be sort of a well and a healthy city, and therefore cross-cuts with so many other strategic sort of, the Health and Wellbeing Strategies, which is still active, you know, it's still sort of, you know, our main sort of citywide document, articulate, it's about best start in life, you know, sort of, I think fundamentally important, isn't it, you know, sort of tackling adverse childhood experiences. But a lot of that goes beyond, you know, and should be, beyond an illness model. It is about, you know, good accommodation, sort of tendency, educational opportunities, you know, sort of those sorts of things, I think, are fundamentally important. So I'm not, I haven't got, I can't say if we do this, this and this, but the principles, the strategic direction, I think, are supported in this strategy and fit alongside the Learning Disability, Autism and Dementia Strategic Approach as well.
Thank you. Martin and then Ruth, if we could be as brief as possible, please.
Thanks, Chair. And thank you for the report, and thank you for your answers to questions, and completely agree around the need to build a healthy city and kind of focus on wellbeing rather than just preventive, reactive treatment to illness. It's important to stop that happening in the first place and to just build a healthy city. I guess kind of contrary to that, I'm just thinking that when we do come to treatment or when we do come to prevention work, so much of the funding is towards physical health, and it's great that there's kind of more of an acknowledgement about the impact of mental health, but I don't think that that's been accompanied by a parity in funding yet. And I was just wondering, as part of this plan and in writing at the partners, has there been any commitment to kind of look at funding in comparison to funding elsewhere and addressing parity? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I think that just even asking the question and surfacing it is fundamentally important, because there isn't parity in terms of the allocation of resources. The 25% of mortality and morbidity that I just articulated here comes nationally with about 8 to 10% of NHS resources, you know, and that has been static and hasn't changed for probably a decade or more. There are small amounts of, you know, sort of mental health minimum investment standards that are being sort of articulated through the NHS Long-Term Plan, and that brings small amounts of changes. But the question sort of is really a question that needs to be posed to us as a society, us as a country, to, you know, to what is important really. I haven't got an answer for you. Locally, I think that we will work through those three areas that I've talked about before, governance, evidence and relationship, and hopefully we can see sort of, you know, those moves. I think one of the things, particularly for mental ill health that's been sort of problematic is that there isn't so much of a really robust economic analysis behind, where there is economic analysis, it is genuinely sort of remarkable, you know, sort of returns on investments are huge, some of the biggest that you'd ever get, sort of totally outside of returns on investments for, for example, for physical health interventions, particularly sort of when people sort of return to maybe workplace, you know, sort of return to education, be economically active and are sort of participating in, you know, in just, you know, communities, sort of society and living life. So I suppose I'm going to turn the question back and say that I would really welcome sort of, you know, this committee's, you know, sort of ongoing help, you know, as individuals, as leaders in our city, so to actually pose those questions back to some of the, particularly the physical health providers. I'm a doctor, you know, physical health is really, really important, of course it is, but we're whole human beings, aren't we? And where maybe small amounts, and it would be quite small amounts of resource shift and move, would have big returns on investment.
Thank you for that, and keep reminding us to ask those questions, and we'll ask them. Ruth?
Thank you. Following on really very much from Martin's question, so, I mean, the numbers in this report are quite frightening, and they've been frightening for years. And, you know, 138,000 people of all ages in Sheffield predicted to experience mental health wellbeing issues, that's a quarter of our population, and we all know that, and we all know there are long-term problems of vulnerable people waiting really excessive times for mental health assessments, and that's, you know, it's long-term and it's endemic, and there's, as far as I can see, no relief in sight in the national political picture on that, as Martin's alluded to, the lack of parity of esteem with mental health, and the even worse lack of funding that comes with that, that you've mentioned. So in developing this holistic strategy that we're hoping will be outworked across all possible agencies, give us some hope, give us some examples of the kinds of positive outcomes that we can look for, because strategy always looks amazing on paper, and you can get a vision of how it's going to outwork, and you get a sort of general vision that things are going to be better. But realistically, how can things be better? And really, especially thinking about, you know, the people who are in misery right now, waiting these really excessive times for an assessment, and of course, their conditions and anxiety, and things can manifest into lifelong problems, simply because there's been such a huge delay in assessment. So how can we really shift on that? And then just a sneaky little question about the Board of Directors, Mental Health, Learning Disabilities, Dementia and Autism Board, the list of members there, everyone's a director. The list of members there, everyone's a director of something. Just want to ask, where is the lived experience coming into that board? Thanks.
I'll answer that one first. So Louisa made mention sort of of the VCSE sort of Mental Health Alliance. The alliance has a seat on the board. The alliance is, is a group of experts by experience, those with lived experience. Links particularly has been supported initially sort of by RETHINK as the national charity sort of locally. But it was being set up and then sort of is, is going to be running sort of very independently locally. The independent chair sort of the VCSE alliance is somebody who has lived experience of mental ill health and is likely to become the co-chair of this board as well. We also have the Mental Health Partnership Network, which is a network of over 60 sort of local VCSE organisations that have direct input to the board. The board also sort of has, is challenged and scrutinised by all of the partnership boards. So the Autism Partnership Board, the Learning Disability Partnership Board, there's a Mental Health Partnership Board that's being relaunched as well. So the VCSE alliance is supporting that. And there is a dementia implementation group as well. And so we've got that sort of triangulated sort of like challenge. Does that make sense? Is that okay? Your first question sort of was about some hope. Yes. I think there is some hope. I don't think I've given up by now, sort of in all honesty. There is still some hope. One of the key sort of programmes of transformation, which this committee might be aware of, but we'd be very happy to bring back formal sort of like, you know, sort of updating reports, that the primary and community mental health transformation programme. Initially, sort of that started in six of the, in four of the primary care networks, 24 months ago, sort of just launched just as Covid hit actually, which was remarkable in itself because it actually launched as a programme that was being delivered predominantly through sort of virtual sort of contact. And that's now sort of moved into six of the primary care networks. So it covers approximately 240,000 sort of the population and is going to be rolled out to the whole city sort of by the, by October of, October this year, 23? We are in 23, yeah. That programme sort of has really brought care closer to home into the primary care networks, has identified and developed sort of like new roles. Because one of the key things in mental health provision is actual sort of practitioners. You know, sort of vacancy rates are high. So we can sort of say about, you know, sort of the lack of, you know, fiscal resources, but actually it's the buying of, you know, you don't need, you know, sort of a PET scanner or, or, you know, sort of, or, or, you know, sort of a surgical robot or, you know, sort of like huge prices. You're looking at, you know, sort of skilled people being able to deliver sort of evidence-based interventions and also come alongside people sort of in their emotional and mental sort of health needs. So that programme that I've just mentioned has, in its inception, in the first sort of 18 months, dealt with the needs of nearly sort of 3,000 people that were not known to either secondary care mental health services or through typical sort of primary care IAPP, improving access to psychological therapy routes. And of that proportion of people that were seen, because there's huge unmet need in mental ill health, as you're well aware. The proportion of that, sort of those 3,000, about 25% of were from sort of black and ethnic minority sort of groups as well, totally sort of like, the stats surprised us, you know. And I think that that is just one, one example of maybe something sort of new that is, you know, sort of happening. But it's still challenging.
Shall I add to that? I was just trying to think of, yeah, positive things as well. So there's, I don't, not entirely sure exactly when, but there's a newish perinatal service that was launched, provided by SHSC. So a lot, a much more rounded offer available to women who, women and their families who need support at that time. And I, you know, some of the things that's happening in schools, really supporting children, families from a much earlier age to, you know, emotional resilience, to learn emotional strategies. And I think, I think that's positive and that's the extra investment in that area.
Yeah, I think 30% of our schools now have a mental health support team sort of embedded into them, which is being rolled out as well.
And then I did just want to encourage you that for those waiting lists where people are waiting right now, our intention is to invest some money into the voluntary sector to support people while they, while they are waiting. So SHSC did a pilot with VAS and with a range of other organisations last year. So while people are waiting, they've been put in touch with people who could support them or find the ways of getting one to set to support while they're waiting. And that's something that we are looking to continue and also perhaps potentially, hopefully, invest to support people waiting for CAMHS as well. So there's, there are some things that we're looking to do as well. I know that CAMHS, for instance, are working hard on reducing that waitingness through organisational things that they can do as well. So some, some things.
Thank you. I'm going to bring that to a close and we have some recommendations. So the first one is endorse the all-age mental and emotional health and wellbeing strategy and note that approval will be sought through the Strategy and Resources Committee. So we're just endorsing it here and request that an accompanying delivery plan is brought to the committee in six months' time along with update on progress made. Are members happy with that?
Brilliant. Thank you. And it's really nice to see you in person. And we are moving to item 14, which is the DAS report and delivery plan.
It's over to me. So first of all, what I'm going to do is start by a thank you as ever to our care sector and our teams in Sheffield and our leadership team and also to our partners and also to members. Because, you know, one of the things I was really reflecting about is I think it's been one of the most toughest winters. I think for those that worked in health and social care for a long time would say it's been one of the most demanding winters. And yet despite that, I think that the care sector has continued to deliver with duty and with commitment. And I think we need to recognise that and I want to say thank you to the care sector. And I think that's really, really important. And I think, so I just wanted to say that to start off by. And secondly, as by way of an update, within the report gives a bit of a look back into 2022 and all that this committee and all the members and all that my teams and all that were partners achieved over the last year. And there has been a lot that's been achieved. And, you know, we developed a strategy and that strategy then informed everything else that we did last year. And, you know, and again, I would like to thank members for reading through and digesting a lot of information last year. But equally, you know, for all the work from my teams that went into this to go and take this forward. And that, what these do is set a foundation for stronger foundations for us going forward. And that is really important because what they do is give us hope and give us a way forward. And fundamentally for the people of Sheffield and for the family members and carers who perhaps are maybe watching this, is what they'll see is that we're committed to delivering the very best outcomes for people and for family members and carers. And that is fundamentally, you know, why, why, why I'm in post to do that. And alongside that, you know, what we look forward to over 2023 and kind of going forward is bringing forth a few, another kind of key first. Number one is a workforce strategy. It's a key requirement as a DAS to have a workforce strategy in place, not just for our council workforce, but actually for the 14,000 care workers that are in the city. And that will be another first. And I'd be really delighted and we'll absolutely focus on not only our workforce strategy and how we value our social care workforce, but also to focus on our workforce wellbeing, which I think is really important, particularly as we've had a demanding winter and we always continue to do in social care. But it will also focus on our practice development and our learning and practice development so that we focus very much on delivering the very best quality of social care that we can do across the city. And then we'll also have a focus on early health and prevention because that's also another key must for adult social care. It's absolutely through everything that we do and it's something that we'll look at forward and going forward. And we'll absolutely, you know, bring forward our updates against, you know, we've changed programme and we're safeguarding and we're financial updates and continue to go and deliver on what we said we would do. And particularly deliver on the performance objectives, which we want to do, which as we get to a good point of doing 80% of annual reviews, you know, that to me is a must that, that we need, you know, that people get equipment when they need it to live independently at home. That people receive confirmation of the type of support that they need to within statutory time scales. That's another must. And equally, that all our social care providers are rated as good. And that people can know about the quality of care that they're getting. And equally, that we do respond quickly to complaints and FLY and we're seen as a responsive service. And it's something that's absolutely my ambition to resolve that and to take that forward in 2023, 24. And equally, what I think is truly important to me is that people tell us that they're satisfied with our services. That to me is always a test of a good social care service is what people tell us. And if people tell us they're satisfied, that is what's important, as with carers and family members. And equally, I want to make sure our workforce is revalued. And also as a DAS, I could provide a committee as assurances regarding our offer to the city because all these things are met. So that's the ambitions as we start to go forward. And what we're going to do is very much thinking about the, you know, the ongoing kind of focus that we've got. And we're going to come into this next in terms of CQC, is do this update and refresh on our change programmes so to make sure that we're absolutely in line with the new obligations that are coming our way. Within the report, there's also a note very much about CQC assurance. And I just want to highlight this to committee members because the governance of this is through the Adult Social Care Committee. And as we go into 2023, 24, what comes with the introduction of the Health and Care Act was many things and the reorganisation of health. But what for social care, what it came to was absolutely was the introduction of insurance process. So that's where my mind has been also over this last, last year. And, you know, very much a focus around four themes, but how we work with people, how we provide support, how we ensure safety and our leadership. And to be really prepared and focused for that, we are doing a number of key things. We are updating our change programme, as I said, to really reflect and map against, you know, the quality statements and, and the learning that we've had over this last year. So that we're really focused and prioritising going forward, that we're learning from peers and from external support. And for me, I always think feedback and learning is a good thing. I think that even though it's things you don't want to hear, learning is good learning. Because ultimately what it does do is that it really helps you to make forward and fundamentally the very best outcomes for people of the city. So taking that learning from peers and external support, equally working in partnership. And we've got partnership colleagues here today, which is just wonderful. And my colleague Ian Atkinson, would have been here today to talk about hospital discharge, but he had to go to somewhere else, as it turns out. But we've got really good partnerships working with colleagues in the city. And for me, it's part of the CQC approaches about how we work in partnership with, particularly not only health colleagues, but we're voluntary sector with housing colleagues and with all the partners so that we've worked together to have that joined up seamless service, sort of the point of view of individuals that they experience a joined up support. That's what's really important. And then finally, that we do really embed that focus on practice quality. That to me is an absolute priority within all this. So that's CQC. Then finally, in terms of DAS and directors assurance, what's also the accountability for me is, is to provide a director's assurance as a DAS for the council. And it's something that I raised as a corporate risk when I came into post and we did a self-assessment and I could not give that assurances because we did a number of things to develop. And over this last year in committee, we have brought forward a number of papers, which has helped us to go and say, actually, we're getting closer to that, that focus on actually what we need to be able to go and deliver, which to me is good. But what I set out for members, so to support the scrutiny function next year, is very much what is a DAS accountability, but also what's a CQC good practice and good standards. And as we go into next year and we very much, you know, bring forward the scrutiny, you know, of this to the committee, what that does is really hopefully enables and empowers members to, to gain the assurances that we're absolutely committed to delivering the best, but also to be able to empower to scrutinise how we are progressing and developing our progress to our CQC. And I think that to me is always really important as that transparency, that openness and that democratic accountability at place in Sheffield. So I'm going to end with that and just end with thank you to all.
Thank you, Alexis. And can I second your, like, thanks to all people who work really hard day in, day out? And I'm sure that members will want to join in that with, you know, thanking everybody from the director to the person who delivers care in Sheffield. We are only asked to note this report. Are there any questions, comments from people? So the recommendation is to know the director of the Adult Health and Social Care Report notes the attach what good looks like assurance and notes the work and the way to prepare for the CQC assurance, including review and practice and learning development plan. Are we happy with that? Brilliant. And we are on the last item on the agenda, item 15.
Hello, everybody. And thanks for having us. Nice to be here. My name's Liam Duggan, Assistant Director for Care Governance and Financial Conclusion.
Hello, Jonathan McKenna-Moore. I'm the Acting Service Manager for Business Planning and Governance in Adult Social Care.
So we've got our regular report, which delivers on our commitment to provide a transparent and accountable financial reporting. We've got some standard updates in here that we'd like to work through around our delivery plan of, delivery upon our financial recovery plan, spend outlook for the next year. And we've also provided an update on the Autumn Statement that was announced in November, which details have been emerging ever since. We've also got a focused look at the steps being taken to ready ourselves for the implementation of the new care and wellbeing contract. A look at automation in, in the context of our recovery plan. And a couple of other pieces around external challenge and a review of the integrated commissioning budget. So firstly, I'm going to ask Jonathan to work through our financial position and I'll pick up the other, the other elements.
Thank you. So I'll give a brief run-through of the first section of the report. So in section 1.1, the reports have some improvement on last month's forecast. We've seen some increases in the outcomes of the reviews of home care. And we've seen some encouragement that the average cost of home care and direct payments has continued to fall. And also we've seen the equipment and adaptations backlog coming down. Now back down to where it was pre-Covid. So we've seen several encouraging signs over the last month that things are headed in the right direction. And that has also translated into a small improvement in the forecast for savings delivery. In the second section, it gives a bit of a view of the financial position in year generally. And you'll see in there it refers to a 10.6 million overspend. This differs slightly to the update you were given previously in this committee, which referred to an 11.6 million. That was referring to month eight financial position. This is referring to month nine, which became available as I was writing the report. So included the most up-to-date data I had available. So it's just to explain the discrepancy there. And again, headed in the right direction. So that is encouraging. And then finally, in section 1.3, there's a discussion, there's an overview of the mitigations. And if you look in the appendix that's provided, that gives you the full detail of the, the different mitigations we've got against each area and which areas of the spending, purchasing budget specifically need that activity. It also outlines that the majority of that is recoverable in next year. Yeah, if we maintain the recent progress that we've, we've been seeing.
Thanks, Jonathan. So a look ahead to 23, 24. The Autumn Statement was announced on the 17th of November. More details were issued nationally just before Christmas. And then other, other pieces more recently still in January. A summary is provided in section two. There is some new funding that's been made available nationally in the form of National Social Care Grant. Social Care Grant, some rescoping of grant. Previously, ring-fenced for fair cost of care, we now have a Market Sustainability and Improvement Fund, which is to be spent on a range of improvements to adult social care, which is set out in the paper, and also a discrete discharge funding pot. There are another, a number of, the budget setting processes is taking place in the council. And we look ahead to twenty-three, twenty-four. We can see we're looking at another financially challenging year for adult social care. The national living wage increase in the Autumn Statement was more than forecasted and we've reported previously that that's going to create around a six point seven million pound pressure next year, which needs to be accommodated from the grant that I spoke about in the previous section. We've got a range of other pressures, including perhaps most significantly, how we address this year's overspend and the underlying position that we'll take forward into next year. Plans are provided in this report that show the activity that's underway for that. We also are showing in our appendix the actions taking place to support our readiness for the new care and wellbeing contracts this year, the reduction in the number of hours that we've commissioned, which is ongoing and has been now reducing for a number of months, to bring us down to an affordable level of care by the summer when the new contracts will take effect. There is a description of the activity that's underway in adult social care around automation and digital technology, which is obviously part of the overarching strategy that John described to this committee earlier on this morning, and a focus on external challenge from the L G A that we are looking to recommission this spring to improve our understanding of our use of resources and opportunities for improved effectiveness. Take any questions?
Thank you, George and then Ruth.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both, Liam and Jonathan. Despite displaying, obviously, there's still incredibly challenging position we find ourselves in, you know, there are a lot of positive movement there, not only the month nine figures, but also it's good to hear that, you know, it looks like we will be in a sustainable position to start the new care and wellbeing contracts, which is really positive. What I was going to ask, sorry, perhaps this is an unwelcome question, but it does seem that, you know, as members, we, you know, we talk about the budgets ever earlier, now that we are, you know, with Budget Council not so far away, you know, in getting towards a settled position for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, when does work start on understanding the underlying pressures for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget?
Thanks, George. Good. Unfortunately, yeah, it's a good question and it started really with the Autumn Statement announcement in November and the work that we've been doing since then to understand what the financial implications of that are likely to be for next year and the two years after that. We will be bringing to this committee a timeline next month for the budget setting process that we would propose and the timeline that we're looking to work to. And we will be working with finance colleagues to update our pressures for next year as soon as we're able to do that. The next piece will of course be benchmarking to give ourselves a sense of where we're at, our latest position. Yeah, and then absolutely we'll be straight into it. But the first thing will be the timeline for committee next month, which will be seeking approval for, which will set out the key milestones for next year's budget.
Thanks for that, Liam. We look forward to that. Not seriously. Ruth, did you want to ask a question?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the report, Liam and Jonathan. I mean, thanks really to everyone who's worked just incredibly hard and who's really challenging, well terrifying really, economic circumstances and finding such creative ways to streamline the service and looking especially at Alexis and, you know, the really creative ways that are coming forward to streamline everything and find, you know, really genuine, long-lasting efficiencies. We talk about efficiencies every year, but I think, you know, the work you've been doing really does start to put us in the right direction. And so, you know, all the financial decisions that have been taken presumably dovetail with that. And I think we, you know, we really tried last year not to just wallop a load of cuts to services in, but instead to, you know, to really look much longer term and take that bolder step of looking longer term to redefine how the services work more within the constraints of what we've got financially. So with that all sort of as the background, I think I'd want to ask about the reserves as set out, I think, I'm on page two five one of our huge report, I'm not sure which page that is of the individual points. At one point, one point two, there's a table that reminds us about the funding from council reserves. And I think, you know, sometimes the council comes under criticism for using reserves and I think that's often unjust and sometimes, you know, levelled by people who perhaps don't have so much knowledge about how things work and sometimes by people who maybe ought to know better about how things work. But I think, can you explain a little bit about the funding from council reserves and how that decision was taken and how it contributes to the work that we've been able to do to find better sustainability models?
So the question of council reserves is probably one best answered by our finance colleagues, although we do set out how this year's budget was balanced. This is the twenty-two, twenty-three budget that's set out in section one point two. And we had forty-three million pounds worth of forecast pressure coming into this year. The target was set for twenty-five million pounds worth of savings delivery and the rest was found from other means, some of which was funded from council reserves. Now, obviously, funding ongoing revenue spend from reserves is not a sustainable position for the council to be in, but it was necessary for this year and that was why we have continued with our financial recovery plan, which should see us broadly able to achieve a balanced budget for twenty-three, twenty-four.
So is there any way we could be in the position we're in now, which is strengthening all the time as far as I see it? Is there any way we could have reached this position without bringing in those reserves?
I think we've delivered more savings this year than we have since I've been in adult social care, which was twenty sixteen. So we've had a phenomenally successful year in terms of achieving efficiencies, as you alluded to earlier, but we are still nine million pounds short of full delivery in year. So that is going to slip into next year and we'll need to make that ground up next year. That's nine million pound slippage on twenty-five point two million. The gap coming into this year is forty-three million pounds. So I think it's hard to imagine how we could have come into this year with a savings target of more than twenty-five million pounds. That's the only way we could have reduced our dependency on reserves this year. So I think pretty essential from my perspective.
Thanks, Liam. I have a question from Steve Thomas. Strictly speaking, non-members are not allowed to ask questions, but if you ask a question, then I can ask it on your behalf. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you very much. So the recommendations for this report are note the updates to the financial forecast for the delivery of savings in twenty-two, twenty-three, note action taken to achieve savings or mitigation of pressures, note the update provided on the Autumn Statement and what being undertaken to prepare for the twenty-three, twenty-four financial year, note the action being taken and the progress made to date to prepare for the introduction of the new care and wellbeing service, note the opportunities for further efficiencies being explored in adult health and social care to improve the use of automation and digital technology, and request updates on progress with implementation through our budget delivery reports for future committee. Who, six. Are people happy with that? Brilliant, thank you. So this concludes the meeting. Next meeting for Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee will be held on Wednesday, fifteenth of March at ten a.m. Thank you, everybody, and thanks to all the officers who have presented today.